Issues facing the city of Meadville.
Is it?
And with us this evening, with us this evening from left to right are Larry McKnight, Democrat for City Council, John Bataglia, a Republican running for City Council, Nancy Mangiello-Bittner, Republican running for City Council, and Autumn Vogel, who is a Democrat. Now, each of the candidates are going to have up to two minutes to introduce themselves, and then we'll begin questioning the candidates, and we'll give the candidates a couple of minutes each, up to a couple of minutes each, to answer the questions. We drew lots beforehand to see who goes first. That's the order we came up with, left to right, one through four. We'll do that with Larry when we open. He'll have the first question, second question will begin with John, but we'll come back to Larry and so on, and we'll go through all that. One other housekeeping thing, every once in a while you might see me hold up a yellow card. That's when they got 30 seconds to go, and then red is the red flag we need you to hold up. We're going to go on to the next person with that question. Anyway, without any further ado, Mr. McKnight, floor is yours for a couple of minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone, first of all, that's here, Cool 101.7, Active Aging and the Tribune. My name's Larry McKnight, and I am a candidate for City Council, Democrat along with Autumn Vogel, and I'm born, I was born and raised here in Meadville, graduated from Meadville Elementary High School. I attended Teal College with a degree in respiratory therapy. I also attended Edinburgh College, and I'm currently studying sociology and criminal justice. I've worked in a various number of fields. I've worked as a TSS, which is the therapeutic support staff. I've worked as a councillor at Bethesda, and also at Vision Quest. The only thing I can say is I love this town. It means a lot to me. I'm just happy to be a part of what's going on, and I hope to be a bigger part as time goes on. And again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming, and thank you guys for having us here.
Thank you. Mr. Bataglia?
I'm John Bataglia. I'd like to thank the Armstrong, Active Aging, and Tribune of radio station for putting this on. I've been on council since 1910, or 2010. Anyway, I was, been, lived here all my life. I went to California University, and I was an industrial arts teacher for almost 40 years. One of my business interests was building new homes. I've built 62, I think, new homes in the Meadville area. Before I was on council, I was, served on the Meadville Area Soil Authorities Board, and the old Parks and Recreation Board. I did a stint, one term, on Crawford Central School Board, and also served on the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit Boards. I have a lot of experience dealing with the city, and my family has lived here since before the war between the states, and I think five or six, seven generations. That's pretty much me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bataglia. Nancy?
Good evening. Thank you to Active Aging, the Meadville Tribune, Armstrong, and Cool 101 for sponsoring this forum. I want to thank those watching at home, and friends and supporters who are here tonight, particularly my husband, Bill, for always being there right by my side. My name is Nancy Mangiello-Bittner. I'm currently serving as a City Councilwoman and the Deputy Mayor. I'm a certified paralegal, and have earned three professional licenses in real estate and appraising. I've taken courses at Allegheny College and pursue continuing education to enhance my professional development. I am the property manager at Meadville Housing Corporation, which is a taxpaying entity owned by private shareholders. As responsible landlords, they invest large sums of money in ongoing upgrades and improvements to their properties. They are a credit to the community and themselves, and provide housing at below-market rents. During my years of public service, I have developed budgets, examined financial statements, and made prudent fiscal decisions to benefit those whom I serve. Like many of you, I have lived in Meadville for most of my life. Like many of you, I am a homeowner, a property taxpayer, and I have a mortgage. And like many of you, I worry that rising property taxes and irresponsible government spending might someday force us to sell the homes that we have made in the community that we love. I have served two terms as a council member, and I've never voted for a property tax increase. The budgeting process for 2020 is about to begin, where we try to take $12 million worth of services with $9 million worth of resources. Careful consideration needs to be given to meeting essential needs for all citizens of Meadville while still maintaining a no-tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Autumn?
I'll start by reiterating the thanks that's been expressed. Thanks to the Tribune for hosting this, Active Aging for housing it, to Armstrong and Cool for making it accessible to folks. Thanks to our volunteers, the volunteers who have helped Larry and I get here. We've had a lot of them, who've dedicated a lot of time and energy. Thank you. And thanks to you all. Thanks to all the folks that are here tonight, all the folks that are listening and that are watching. This is about you. This is why we're doing this. My name's Autumn Vogel, and I'm running for City Council with Larry McKnight. I've lived in Meadville for eight years. I came here in 2011 to attend Allegheny College, and over the course of my four years there, I fell in love with this town. I had the opportunity, after I graduated, even while I was in school, to work several jobs. Some of you know what that is like. I was the second Saturday Community Market Coordinator. I organized the Year of Meadville for Allegheny College. I was the Community Development Coordinator for the Redevelopment Authority. I led the My Meadville Project. I was a barista at Tarabine Roasting Company, and I coordinated this last season of mobile markets for the Market House. Through all of that work, I've gotten to know and hear from a lot of folks in our town, including Larry. And over the last six months, Larry and I have gotten to know and hear from a lot more people by going door-to-door, two times a week, every week, for six months alongside some very dedicated volunteers. And what have we heard across the board? We've heard that people are ready for something different, and Larry and I are embodying that by running together. As bold new leaders, ready to listen to our constituents, Larry and I are running a cooperative campaign that's committed to addressing the issues that Meadville faces, a campaign committed to a transparent and participatory local government, to quality affordable housing, and to an investment in our public spaces and resources. When you walk into the voting booth on November 5th, you'll get two votes for City Council, and we're asking for both of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll begin our questioning with Larry McKnight, and Rick has our first question.
Again, thank all four of you for joining us tonight and making appearance here on behalf of the Tribune, Cool 101.7, and Armstrong. First question is to Larry. What do you think is the city of Meadville's greatest asset?
Oh, that's easy. It's people. You know, when people come together, they can do amazing things. And I think that's part of City Council, is to bring the people together, to work to better our community. I think they need to sit down and have open interviews, open sessions, assemblies, hotel meetings, and get input from the different, diverse crowd of people that we have here in Meadville.
Great. Thank you. John?
I would agree. The people that live here make the town. If you go back in history, from the city, the people have done amazing things. You know, they started a college, they started businesses, they, all these volunteer agencies that are here, you know, there's hundreds, actually. People have stepped up and, and made life for people a lot more pleasant in this city. And we have a long, probably 200-year history of people stepping forward and getting things done in this city. Thank you.
Nancy?
Definitely the people in the city of Meadville. I recall about a year or so ago, in the front page of the paper, there's a picture of a dog that was hungry and looked unfit, and within, I guess, five minutes, there was 15 calls for someone to take that dog. Meadville comes forward. Three years ago, when we wanted to have the Jimmy Moore Party, and we couldn't have it, Meadville stepped up and backed that party so we could do it for these people. We have, because we're the county seat, we have so many nonprofits in this town, and so many people that we need to serve, and people in this town are willing to step up at any time, and they'll work the Jimmy Moore, they'll work for Center for Family Services, they'll work the food pantries, they'll come, they'll serve in whatever capacity that they have to. Meadville, definitely the people is their number-one source.
Thank you. Autumn?
I would say that Meadville's greatest asset are its traffic lights. Just kidding. I think that Meadville's greatest asset are its people, as we've heard, for all of the reasons expressed here. But I think more than anything else, our greatest asset is our people because of their can-do spirit. So we've, over the course of my Meadville, a multi-year community listening process, we've gotten to see some really wonderful ideas turn into action, and that's because people here are inventive and creative, they're willing to put in hard work, and they're willing to try new things and take risks to see things happen. We have a can-do spirit in Meadville that I think is unrivaled, and I think it's time that our City Council matches that can-do spirit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question will go to John. If elected, what are your top priorities for City Council?
Oh, many. Probably our, you know, next month, we start the budget process, which is the most difficult thing, trying to maintain real estate taxes at the level they're at. And as Nancy alluded to, there's always many more projects than there's money to pay for it. So I think, trying to, or not trying to, we actually have to get all the streets paved, you know, all the lights working, all the streetlights on, all the things that have to be done, and still hold the line on property taxes. We have a number of different taxes that we collect revenue from, but probably the most onerous one is real estate taxes, because, you know, they're not in line with what you make or anything like that. It's just, you know, what your house is worth, and sometimes people just have a hard time paying their real estate taxes. So that's the most biggest concern of council.
Thank you. Nancy?
My goal, number-one goal will be to continue to balance the budget without a tax increase. Being in real estate, I see how people suffer when real estate property taxes go up. There are people in their 80s that are attempting to sell their homes that can't put any capital into the home, and as a result of the high real estate taxes, can't afford to sell their home. The city, I would like to see us continue. A couple of years ago, we provided $250,000 to the RDA to improve the facades downtown, slum and blight, and the legal fees necessary to take properties from the Tax Claim Bureau and put them rehab, and put them back on the tax rolls. And I'd like to contend the accelerator grants to promote the development of new businesses downtown. To date, three of them have been successful, and I'd like to see that continue. And I'd like to find other sources of revenue. We need to stop borrowing money in order to do simple things like pave city streets. It's a shame that we have to borrow the money. I think we did five miles of streets this year, and we had to borrow the money in order to do it. Those are three, my most important things.
Good. Thank you. Autumn?
The top three priorities of the campaign that Larry and I are running together, we're informed by listening to people for years, through my Meadville, through Larry's time as a bus driver, and they resonate with people. We go door-to-door, and this is what people want to see. People want to be involved and included in the decisions that are made that affect their lives. People want safe and affordable housing, especially the 58% of Meadville who rents their homes. And people want an investment in our public spaces and resources. They want to be able to walk to a quality park, they want to be able to go to a community center and know that their kids are safe when they're out and about in their neighborhood. Those are our three priorities.
Thank you. Larry?
I'm going to have to agree with Autumn. We are on the same ticket on that. I can't elaborate more than the more importance of safe housing, safe, affordable housing. We need to look into government and state grants. They're talking about, already about taxes, not wanting to raise taxes. You have to have solutions, and some of those solutions have been around but not utilized. So I think we need to start using some of the tools that we already have, and that's one of our priorities, safe, affordable housing, as Autumn stated, our parks, recreations, and of course, making sure that people are involved in all the decisions that involve, concern City Council and themselves.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. On our third question, Nancy, we'll ask you this. You've been on council, and this will be for also the candidates who are trying to get on council. Fluoride's been added to Meadville's water system. Do you support the action by the Meadville Area Water Authority, and since council does appoint members to the Water Authority? And why or why not do you support the fluoridation?
I attended several town meetings on the fluoridation issue. It was clear to me that there were people on both sides of the aisle in that room, and I listened for two and a half, three hours to all those. I read all the material that was available on it. It was not my decision to make, it was the Meadville Area Water Authority's. However, I felt personally that everyone that paid a water bill should have had the opportunity to have a vote for whether or not that went through. The people in the Water Authority were already appointed when I came on council. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Autumn?
Sure, so I agree with Nancy. The fluoride in the water, right, there are folks on all ends of that spectrum, compelling arguments on both sides, but that's a prime example of a lack of public involvement in a decision that very much impacts us every day. It's the water we drink, it's the water we bathe in, there's nothing that's kind of actually more tangible of a decision to be made than the condition of our water and what's put in it. There was not a public referendum. That was a perfect opportunity and a misfortune to engage people in that process. But there was also, City Council also needs to have a more transparent and open process to appointing authority members. There was a lot of speculation about the way in which some of those board members were appointed, who was appointed to that authority, had the city had a process by which we follow for each appointment, where folks can transparently apply, they know what's open, they can apply, there's a process to follow, that would not have been an issue, and we wouldn't have been quite in the position we're in, where folks kind of now feel maybe this distrust in this public service that's administered to them, and the public authority that administers it. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
I've listened to quite a few people, pros and cons, but I think City Council could have done a better job of information. Because of the lack of information, the lack of openness, as she stated, that the decision was made by the Meadville Area Water Authority. I thought that was a part, or been under the City Council, or City Council had some type of cohesion or working with them. So I think as part of City Council's job should have said, hey, let's let our, the people that it affects, let's let the taxpayers have an input on this. I think that that's something that Autumn and I want to do, is make the government more participatory between the residents. Residents should have a vote, especially on something that concerns their health. As I said, there are pros and cons on both sides. I feel there should have been more information published in the paper maybe, or handouts where people could have had access to it, to make a more informed decision.
Thank you. John?
I'd have to disagree with Larry on that, because there were, I don't, several meetings I sat through in this room, I believe, and a lot of issues were discovered, or were discussed. I was not in favor of adding anything to the water that doesn't have to be there, and I really was kind of against the fluoride thing, but it wasn't council's decision. Council's responsibility was to appoint members to the Water Authority, and we interviewed people for that job, that it was kind of a long process. Some of the members I didn't support, and some of them I did. But in the end, there was lots of information out there, and lots of people agreed with the decision to put fluoride in the water, lots of people didn't, including me. But in the end, council's job is to appoint members to the authority, and they run the system, and it was their job to decide what they decided. Unfortunately, it was not the decision that some of us wanted.
Thank you. All right, our next question, we will begin with Autumn. And we talked a little bit ago about budgets. City's got about nine to, $9 million to $10 million budget a year. What experience do you have in management of assessing, doing, negotiating, and reading budgets and contracts?
Sure. Question of my experience, great. So my experience looking at budgets and contracts, right, I got my kind of first taste of that in the Redevelopment Authority as Community Development Coordinator. I actually administered the programs that Nancy mentioned earlier, the facade improvement program downtown, the entrepreneur accelerator grant program, right? So I constructed what those programs looked like along this team of volunteers, and we facilitated together that process of assisting people in crafting a business plan, conducting pro forma financial projections, and deciding whether or not their business would be viable. A lot of people make the claim that the city is a business. While I won't go that far, I will say, right, there are some tools and that you would use that are similar. I'm currently employed now as a cooperative development consultant for Keystone Development Center, and I help co-ops do that kind of stuff, too. Put together budgets, put together pro forma financials, and figure out if their cooperative business, this business that they're doing together, is viable. I think the cities may be a little more like that than a traditional business, but I feel confident and ready and capable, and excited to learn more. Thanks, Keith.
Thank you. Larry?
As well, I'm, first of all, I'm excited to learn. I don't know everything, and I'm not going to sit and make you think I do, but the main interest is that I do have the people's interest at heart, and I'm willing to learn. I did, I have run a business. My family owned a bar here in Meadville for quite some time. I ran it successfully, which is taking care of family members, making sure that my younger brothers and sisters went through college, as well as paying bills, ordering stock for the bar. I also worked for CADA in a supervisory position on the maintenance department of the vehicles. It was my job to make sure all maintenance was taken care of, order equipment, keep up records of incidents or accidents. I have some experience also working through music on the road. We had to take care, take our own inventory of equipment, pay bills for lodging. So I do have some experience, and I'm able to learn and understand. Yes, I'm naive to some of it as much as John or Nancy, however, the most important thing is I have a willingness and a desire to learn to help make this a better place.
Thank you. John?
Well, before I was on council, which I've been on for a number of years, and I was on a Crawford Central School Board, which has a much bigger budget, probably not as much pressure as the city, but I've gone through a number of new homes with people that had probably the biggest investment of their life, walk them through their budget in there, but I've been on a number of organizations, had to deal with the budget every year, and I think I'm pretty well qualified in that department.
Thank you. Nancy?
Well, my first experience with doing a budget came from my dad, when I, before I graduated high school. And he taught me, he sat me down and explained to me what a budget was about, a housing budget. Next experience was getting involved with United Way. It used to be a community chess here in Meadville. 28 agencies were part of it, drug and alcohol, Center for Family Services, women's services. And I was on the distribution committee there, and we had to look at everybody's audits and budgets for all 28 of those agencies. I learned quickly how big a budget each one had, what they were doing with their budgets, what they could spend, what they couldn't spend. And been on with the city now for eight years. I look at line by line, every single item, what can be, what can go, what can come. As far as contracts, interpreting contracts, I'm a certified paralegal, worked for a law firm, I managed their law firm, did their budget, helped them do their budget, and worked every field of the paralegal there is. And I feel that I'm qualified to, for both of those positions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll come back down to the other side of the table. Larry, this question's for you. In developing the budget each year, City Council's often faced with either having to cut services or staff, or raise taxes to maintain services. What's your philosophy, and why?
Well, I don't have a set philosophy, but what I will say is that I have an idea that we need, again, to look at different ways of raising revenue. There are state and federal grants that we can apply for. We could look at increasing the pilot program, the funds that are offered to the pilot program. Again, the most important thing is going to the community, asking them what their input is. We have to realize that the jobs aren't the same anymore. People's income has gone down, people have left the area, the tax burden is on the residents here. We have to look at different ways of alleviating that, and again, to sit here and say, no, we won't raise taxes, that would be a lie. Eventually, somewhere down the line, you're going to have to raise taxes. However, people don't mind raising their taxes if their services aren't cut. I don't want to see us cutting services again, I don't, emergency services, to be exact, I don't want to see that, but we have to be open-minded and look at different ways of raising revenue. And there are things out there, but we just aren't looking in the right direction.
Thank you. John?
I'd have to say we are looking in the right direction. We've been, we've been pretty successful since I've been on council, keeping our taxes down and keeping our services, maybe not as good as they once were, but keeping them at least adequate for our citizens. We've got a good staff now that has been really successful in getting a number of grants, some of them, we have some big expenses that we haven't been successful, new fire trucks and stuff like that. But I would have to say that, that this present council, and all the councils I've served with have been, really worked pretty hard, and I don't think we have left very many stones unturned when it comes to grants and stuff like that.
Thank you. Nancy?
Well, when I look at the budget, it's 100 pages, I go over it line by line. First thing I look at is, are there any expenses that can be cut? Nobody wants to take anybody's job. Nobody wants to take away the services that we provide, the essential services, police, fire, public works. If you, if you haven't paved the streets, if you haven't plowed the streets, how are they going to get to work? But sometimes we have to make tough decisions. Sometimes that piece of equipment that the fire company needs, or the cruiser that the police department needs, sometimes that has to go for another year. Unfortunately, we have to refinance bonds sometimes, and that increases our debt service. So you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. The people, the biggest thing we need to realize, and I've lived here all my life, we used to have 18,000 people in this town. We have 13,000 people now. So you can do the math. When you lose people, and you lose, it used to be the two-and-die capital of the world. We no longer are. So you have to find other ways to make things work. And when you are on council, you have to take into consideration all 13,000 people that you represent, and sometimes that makes the tough decisions. That's why it's so important to put the people on that you feel will do their homework and make the right decisions for you. And sometimes those are tough decisions. Nobody wants to take away fire, police, and public works. That represents two-thirds of our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Autumn?
So this is tough, but my philosophy is that it's not just council's decision to make. So I think that, you know, paramount to the campaign that Larry and I are running is this idea of involving people in the decisions that are made that affect their lives. And these decisions about taxes and the tough position we're in about whether we raise them, or whether we hollow out our services, it's tough, but it's not for me to make for every citizen, right? Folks need to have an actual say in these decisions that affect, again, their everyday lives. They affect how their roads get plowed, they affect emergency services that are available, they affect the park down the street, they affect the condition of our housing. Other communities are engaging in a participatory budgeting process. I think Meadville should do the same, and it's not just me who thinks that. It came up in the My Meadville Community Action Plan as an action item. So people from around town came up with the idea and vetted it themselves, that this is something we want to do in our town, we want to travel to neighborhoods. We want to travel to neighborhoods, we want people to weigh in on the things that can be funded and maybe the things that can be cut, and prioritize where we spend our money. And we do that all over town, and then we take it back, and then we make decisions together about what that budget looks like for all of us, and we go from there. Other communities are doing that around the world, around this country and in this area, and I think that we should do it as well. I've heard just the other week from a resident who expressed that she understood that we are in a position where she didn't necessarily want to pay more in taxes, but she doesn't want those services to be hollowed out. She doesn't want to pay more than comparative townships around us for not the quality of services, you know, that she's paying in for. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll start this with John. The city of Meadville has had a stormwater management fee for several years. In your opinion, is this fee working to improve infrastructure and should the city explore other fee-type arrangements?
Would you mind running that by me again? I can quite hear you.
Sure. The city of Meadville has had a stormwater management fee for several years. In your opinion, is this fee working to improve infrastructure and should the city pursue other fees?
Absolutely. Ever since I've been in council, I've been more in favor of fee-based revenue. Stormwater program is, you know, it, stormwater didn't used to be much of an issue. But when DEP got involved with, you know, how much stormwater can go where, and we had flood planes and stuff like that, then it started to get important, and we had to manage. We had to manage the stormwater, and we had to pay for it, and it's pretty expensive. You know, we have one, one small project up by Walgreens there that was like three-quarters of a million dollars to replace a section of drain which goes into Mill Run. No way in, no way in the world could the city have ever fit that into their budget without the stormwater plan. And they've done absolutely tons of work to alleviate stormwater problems. They've been all over. There were a great big project over by Penn Plaza. I think it was, what, like $25,000, $30,000 to fix a broken pipe that was 27 feet down in the ground. That had been there for a long time. Those kind of things could not happen without dedicated, dedicated revenue. And it's dedicated to stormwater. It is really fair because it isn't just set on homeowners, it isn't just set on property owners. Everybody pays, nonprofits. I see the flags going up.
You still got about 25 seconds, so.
That's enough.
Thank you. Nancy?
I thought the stormwater management fee was one of the good things that we did. Nobody, it is a tax, no matter how you look at it, it's an additional tax on the taxpayers. What I liked about it was the fact that it also, the nonprofits would pay their fair share too. And I thought it was fair across the board to everyone. I know that you've seen Baldwin Street, there's probably been two or three where we've had them blocked off for, what, a week? One of them, without that stormwater management fee, we couldn't, we wouldn't have been able to do that work. So I think, I think you have to be careful what you're putting on, but I think that was probably one of the best decisions we've made. And it is successful.
Thank you. Autumn?
Sure, I think, as has been alluded to, I think in a city with an unfair tax burden, right, where 56% of property owners are paying for 100% of our public services because of our 44% tax-exempt property owners. I think that fees like this that are paid across the board, whether you're for profit or not-for-profit, they can even, the playing field, right, everybody pays in for the services that everybody pulls from. I think it's one tool in the toolbox, and I think that there are other, there are other fees that other communities are doing like this. A fire assessment fee that could pay for equipment and personnel has been instituted in other communities. And that's something that could be drawn on if, after an inclusive participatory budgeting process, people say they want to see an improvement in public services, or they don't want to see their taxes cut, right? That could be an option to present to people, among some other options, right, as far as this is a way that we could fund the things that you want to see in your community. And yes, it's a good model.
Thank you. Larry?
I, I think overall it's a good plan, again, because it brings everybody to the same playing board. As Autumn stated, there are other tools in that box that we need to utilize. We need to look at maybe getting delinquent taxes, being more aggressive on delinquent taxes. There's revenue that's, a lot of lost revenue that we have from people that are not willing to be a taxpayer, the missing, the absentee landlords. That's a big problem for me. We need to address that. I think a lot of the problem is, again, that we're not sitting down and brainstorming. With the different type of people we have here, from different walks, different jobs, you have accountants, you have lawyers, you have businessmen. The successful businessmen don't stay in business without knowing what to do. We need to utilize them, get their input. Again, we need to come together as a community and come up with suggestions and ideas.
Thank you. Next question, we begin with Nancy. It was in the paper the other day, had ribbon cutting for H.P. Wade Park. Rebuild up on the city's north side. It really looks great, but there's a lot of other parks around the city that don't look that good. How can city council make sure that all the residents have access to quality parks?
I participated in that. We use a lot of grant money for our parks. Grants were provided this year, were also set aside for Bicentennial Park and Shady Brook Park. The city used grants, borrowings, and donations to fund HT Park. It cost $460,000. We had to work with the state, the county, Mala, Senator Brooks, and Representative Roy's office. Without the good people that we have at City Hall writing those grants and going after those grants, I don't know that that would have happened. Right now, I know that we're working on three kayak access points in the city. We're doing everything we can. Again, it comes down to where is your revenue going to come from and where are your expenditures going? Where are you going to get the money? That's what it comes down to. We are most willing, we talk about it all the time, we don't just meet twice a month, we have meetings all the time. I listen to people everywhere. If I go to the grocery store, somebody's talking to me about the parks, or somebody's talking to me about the taxes, everywhere I go, I sit on nonprofits, I listen. I know what the problems are in the city of Meadville, but the answers, sometimes you just don't have all the answers to fund everything. But I'm more than willing to listen. Doors are open, my phone is listed, and people call me all the time to go over these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Autumn?
People love parks. We heard that in the My Meadville process. People love their neighborhood parks, people miss the summer parks program. What people love about their neighborhoods is their parks, and sometimes what they want to change about their neighborhood is their parks. I think ensuring that folks have great quality parks in their neighborhood is a way to kind of revitalize neighborhoods, right? It's a way to get people connected to each other, to be proud of where you're from. And I think that there's two ways that we can do that in our parks throughout town. The first is for the city to support the summer parks program. That came out of the My Meadville process as kind of one of the biggest things that we almost heard from everybody that we talked to, is that folks want programming in their parks the way it used to be when they were young, or people want places for their kids to go and supervise activities for their kids throughout the summer. And so a grassroots group of people came together to make the summer parks program happen in parks in and around Meadville. The same program was called out as a priority in the city's own Parks and Greenways Plan, but the city hasn't gotten behind it in the way that they should. And we think that it's the city's job to make public spaces more open and welcoming. The city getting behind the summer parks program that residents are really leading is a great way to do that. The second way is the condition of our parks, right? As has been mentioned, some parks are getting a ton of attention and look beautiful, and some parks are totally forgotten. What was called out in that same parks, actually in the 2013 comprehensive plan, was the need for a regular park maintenance schedule, which we do not have. But what we do have are a ton of community volunteers going out and cleaning up our parks in grassroots efforts like Thankful Thursday, Dog Days, and the Summer Parks Program are doing that too. We need a park maintenance plan that gives us an objective for what parks we're going to prioritize, maybe the ones that need it most, and how folks can join in and help us out. Thank you.
Larry?
I agree with Autumn. We need to look at our parks. Nancy mentioned that the $92,000 spent on H.P.
That was $460,000.
Well, okay, regardless, it says here there is $92,000 on H.P. Parkway. My concern is, what about Fifth Ward? What about First Ward? I feel that if you're going to have parks and be representative of the city, each park should be equally maintained and equipped. I don't understand why or how the decisions are made to spend X amount of dollars here and not be willing to spend. There's kids in these neighborhoods. Again, we need to listen to the people that live there. Some of the neighborhoods, you might not need equipment for playgrounds because there are no kids. Maybe it's a dog park, but you need to have input from the community as what type parks they want there. I've heard, I have had a conversation with a gentleman that lives up by Highland. He doesn't even like the park because of the lights, the noise. So, I mean, this is something, the decisions that are being made should be made with input from the city.
You want to refresh me on what we were?
Sure. You've got H.P. Wade Park, got rebuilt, about $360,000, really looks great. But unfortunately, there is a number of other parks around town that don't look that good.
Interesting that Larry and Autumn brought up the summer program, which we had for many, many years. And I was actually on the recreation board at the time, and we struggled with that program the last few years that we had it because nobody came. And likely it was because what they were doing was outdated. You know, they were doing crafts programs and stuff like that. And I think now people are more interested in sports kind of activities and stuff. And we had a good run this summer of people participating, but unfortunately, parks are a big deal, expensive thing to do. We have a lot of, a lot of efforts put into the Bicentennial Park, Ken Beers Park down by French Creek there. And there's a lot of grant initiative going on to extend that, clear up to the Spring Street Bridge. There's going to be kind of a, I don't know what you call it, entertainment district with bike pathways and stuff. But when we did the last city plan, was a pretty extensive, pretty comprehensive plan. Probably the number one thing that people asked for or wanted, were interested in was recreation, trails, parks, and stuff like that. But the hard part is, in addition to figuring out how to pay for it, is seeing what people actually use. Some of the things that people ask for, you know, they don't actually ever happen because they're not really as interested in the activity as they seem to be inclined to say.
All right, thank you. Next question, we begin with Autumn. Meadville's got a lot of events that go on in better weather, basically April to first part of October. But it seems like there's a lot of sometimes alcohol-themed events. Do you think Meadville has too many alcohol-themed public events going on in this town?
Can I ask a clarifying question, Keith?
Sure.
Do you mean in the summer or in the winter? Is it seasonal?
Well, in general. I mean, do we have too many, not necessarily, they're not sponsored by the city, but I mean, there's groups that put them on. Do you think there are too many that kind of have an alcohol-related theme?
Yep, there are alcohol events, sure, but you know what, there also are there events without alcohol, and there's so many events that are free, and they have been cropping up. There's more and more of them all the time. Because we recognize to some extent, they've come up because folks are, you know, battling with addiction and in the process of recovery, and so we're creating spaces intentionally where people can come together away from some of that stuff and be in safe spaces in supportive communities. Okay, Winterfest, the summer concert series in several parks, parking lots. We've had beautiful park parties, we've had pop-up events, galleries, cafes, museums. We've had a myriad, a myriad list of events that I can think of that I think the only substance that was involved was coffee, maybe free coffee, caffeine was there. But the events that are available to Meadville residents that are free of cost and free of any kind of drug are endless, and you can find them at meadvilecalendar.com. Thanks.
All right, Larry?
I agree with Autumn. I feel that the things that are involving alcohol are put on by just small select groups. As a whole, I don't, I don't see Meadville promoting alcohol events. So I don't think there's a problem with that. I think that we ought to look into more events. When I was growing up, we had the street dances at the Diamond Park. There was never a problem there. Cruisin's, you don't really see that big a problem. Again, I think if we start coming together and think of ideas and things and promote non-alcoholic programs, it would be a success. I think that's what the problem is. Everyone that's coming together are ones that are, they're promoting alcoholic events. I'm quite sure if you have people that are coming together that say, hey, listen, we don't want alcohol, this is for kids, it's family-oriented, that you'll have that. But I think also that is part of city council to go out and say, hey, listen, we want to have more events, family-oriented, non-alcoholic, who's interested? And I think that would solve that problem.
Thank you. John?
I don't know that you have too many alcohol-centered things. You have quite a few of them. But when you said that, it was kind of interesting. I went to the county fair with my nephew, who lives in Arizona, and he said, this is the first fair I've been to where they didn't have beer. And he goes to a lot of fairs. And then a couple of, you know, maybe half hour later, he said, they don't have any police here either. You know, it kind of goes hand in hand. But I haven't seen a problem with, with, you know, Voodoo has the street thing and with beer and so on. But, and I noticed that during the Thunder in the City, there was a few of those trailers. I don't know what you call them, but they were serving beer, but, you know, I don't think you need to have it. But I wouldn't say you have too many of them, but I happen to agree with Larry on this one that, that, you know, there needs to be more family-oriented kind of things. And there are some of those, you know, that in the diamond and stuff. But we do have a lot of events going on, which makes it a great place to live. But I would, I would not say that the alcohol thing has been a problem.
All right, thank you. Nancy?
Yes, I'm not aware of any, of too many events that have happened. My concern would be, and if we would have a lot more, I would want to know about it. Because obviously, paying police overtime and trying to managing these or getting sued by somebody who got hurt, the city can't afford those kind of risks. But I haven't been made aware that we have too many of those events. As far as the family-related events, I'd love to see them. We used to have, as he referred to, the dances in the park and the concerts that we have in the park, they're wonderful things. There are people that really enjoy that. But there are some events that are taking place in town that a select group of people like to attend. And we have to, while I love seeing these things happen, for the city to try to expend money for a select group would be very hard to do. We have to, our budget has to reach across 13,000 people. We have to be careful what we're spending our money on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this question will go to Larry. Right now, the city has no formal application process for appointing people to the city's authorities, boards, and committees. Interested volunteers may submit a letter of interest to the city. Often, a member of council will meet with an applicant and conduct an interview. What criteria should the city use to vet and staff these important agencies?
Well, experience, definitely be one. But again, a willingness of a person, a desire, that's a lot of these positions are. But again, a willingness of a person, a desire, as a lot of these positions are, they're volunteering. So that plays a big part of. I know people that have wanted to work for the, or be involved with the rec complex, they were never gotten back in touch with after going through the process of filling out an application, making phone calls. So I think that we should have a more open process, and it shouldn't be made just behind closed doors. I think everything should be either put in a paper, follow-ups done, and open follow-ups. Let people know, you know, listen, we've, there's a position open, we've selected three candidates for it, now we're down to two. And have it open, so people can get input into it and make the job aware, let people be aware of what the job is, what it entails. But again, the most, I think one thing is important, when people show a willingness to, that they're volunteering for a program, and they're not accepted, it discourages people. So I think one of the things we need to do is, again, be open. Let people bring in a new breed of people. Let's not keep turning over the same people or friends of the same people over and over again.
Thank you. John?
Well, more often than not, we actually have to go out and seek people to sit on authorities. We have to find, before I was on council, I was on the sewer authority, and they said, you have to quit, but you've got to find somebody to replace you. So a lot of times, the nominations, if you want to use that word, come from the authorities, members of the authority. You know, they forward us names. Once in a rare while, more people want the job than there are vacancies. So that doesn't happen very often, but when it does, we interview them. And we have interviewed people for the sewer authority, water authority, et cetera, et cetera, members of council, you know, ask them what their experience is and how they would fit into the authority. And sometimes, we don't select who you would like, but we appoint the people that we think are best able to work on authorities. And there, you know, we have excellent business people on the redevelopment authority, you know, we have knowledgeable people on the sewer authority, and same with the water authority. We have people that know the business, and we try to do that. Some of the ones like Recreation Authority are a little tougher because you need a broad spectrum of people on there, and it comes from both West Mead and Vernon and the city of Meadville. So that's not as easy. I see your card. Okay.
You've still got 30 seconds. Yellow's 30 seconds. Nancy?
Well, I brought what's on the website. How does one volunteer, what are volunteer qualifications? That's on our website. So I think it is transparent. There are questions on available openings that you could ask the city, they would respond to you. We welcome people to come to the public meetings. Most of the time, I'm looking at nobody in the audience. Since I've been on council the second time, four years, I think I've appointed three people. That's the only people that have come before us. For example, right now, we need three vacancies on the mark board. You probably would want to have a strong business or financial background or recreation background to be on that board. So I think that qualifications vary from board to board and from time to time. But it's been my experience since I've been on council that we have a lack of people that are willing. Now, maybe this year, somebody all of a sudden decided they wanted to be on a certain board, and now this is coming to light. But in my experience, it has not come to light in four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Autumn?
So there's a narrative, and we're hearing it tonight, that folks aren't interested in getting involved in city government. And in my experience, that's just not true. If it's the fact, if it's attributed to authorities not being able to find new folks, then the city needs to standardize and publicize a process by which folks know and then can apply to open authority positions. As you pointed out, John, right, those authority members are volunteers, and so it could be the city's job, right, to make that standard and transparent. I know in the last probably year-plus of three cases where people applied as they were instructed to apply, which isn't a formal process by any means, but they applied for open positions on authorities. They were held at bay for months, they weren't contacted, they were never responded to, and then finally, someone else was appointed, right? Someone else that the authority and the council knew personally was appointed to fill that seat. What I have seen in my time with my Meadville is that people are so ready and willing to step up and to do the work that's needed in our town, and they want ways to get involved. Some of the people that joined our leadership team had applied for boards, authorities, and commissions of the city and were rejected, but they still had this kind of unmet desire to do more in our town, and we gave them a space to do that. So I have to, I have to object to the idea that folks don't want to get involved. Just a few weeks ago, we held a pizza party and policy workshop where we had over 60 people come out and start to draft policy that our city can enact. One of those working groups was a group that actually looked at what a process that is transparent and standard and public would look like for appointing new members to boards, authorities, and commissions. So people are already working on just the process, and that's the boring stuff. So imagine what they'll do when we actually give them a chance to sit on the authority and make decisions for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. John, you can start off with this question. If elected, will you be accepting city benefits, for example, insurance?
Talking to me?
Yep, talking to you.
Yeah, well, that's available to all employees, council members are employees. I get Medicare, so, you know, I don't really need it. But yeah, if it's available, I think that you should take it.
Okay. Nancy?
Well, I work, and I have insurance provided for me at work. So as of the eight years that I have been on council, I have not taken the insurance portion that is provided to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Autumn?
I work, too, but my job, it's full-time, but it still doesn't provide healthcare like a lot of other people's jobs. So I will be taking that health insurance. Thank you.
Larry?
I'm in agreeance. I work full-time, but my job doesn't provide healthcare, so yes, I will take. It's been being offered to everyone else, so I'm not going to be different.
Thank you. All right, next question, begin with Nancy. Should Meadville have a rental housing licensing and inspection program? Why or why not? And if you do agree that there should be one, what happens if the landlord doesn't make repairs? What kind of mechanism would you put in place to make sure repairs are made?
Well, I have rented. For the first 20 years of my life, I rented, and then I owned a property, a four-unit building myself. I lived in it, so it made it a little easier to maintain the building. And now I am the property manager and have been for almost 20 years for almost 300 units. So I feel I have a pretty good background in this area. And what I know is that we have the Landlord Tenant Act, which provides a tremendous benefit to the tenants. In fact, the tenants have more rights than the landlords do. There's a procedure to follow if you run into issues for both the landlord and the tenant. It's, I've heard that people would like to have an approved landlord list. My question would be, who would pay for it? And how much will it cost to fight a lawsuit because someone inadvertently was left off the list? Rent control reduces the supply of affordable housing. What would happen? Landlords would simply take the best properties and turn them into condos or something else. Other landlords would let their places go. They'd let them go back to the tax lien bureau. So the remaining houses that would be subject to rental control would be removed from the market with little or no turnover, and tenants would then stay for decades. So in order to get a decent rental property, it would become a who-you-know. A rent control causes the pool of available housing to go down significantly, so you end up hurting the consumers that you're allegedly trying to protect. Housing inspections, the city responds to complaints about housing code violations and has been doing so for years. This program has no higher cost being assessed to the tenants. On the other hand, universal housing inspections cost money. Every dollar charged to landlords is passed on to tenants as increases in rent. For a landlord like Allegheny College, for example, you'd be talking annual fees of $50,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Autumn?
Sure. So just to be clear, the question was about rental licensing and inspection?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So yeah, so I do, I think that the city of Meadville should, like many other communities in the country, in this area, like Erie, institute a rental registration and licensing program, chiefly because more than half of Meadville rents their homes, and the quality and affordability of our homes right now is not meeting people's standards, right? When we go door-to-door, Larry and I, we're seeing the quality of homes that people are living in, and we're hearing from them stories of, that they have with their landlords, stories that they have just about the homes that they live in. We're seeing holes in the porch, holes in the roof, they're experiencing mold, right? And these are things that don't make for safe and quality homes and don't make for good quality of life. A rental registration and licensing program, especially in a community like Meadville with a high renter rate, could be a way to combat some of that stuff, some of those issues that we're seeing. Again, other cities have done this. A program like this is revenue-neutral, where all landlords would pay per property a nominal fee of $30 to $50. We could model it off of what other communities have done, other places. And it is, again, revenue-neutral, and that $30 or $50, right, is an annual fee that very likely, you know, is far exceeded by what landlords are actually making on their properties. And that system, right, would allow us to, first of all, know what properties, which again, are the majority of properties in town, are occupied by renters. It would allow us to enforce code and not just at the request of renters who fear eviction. And it would allow us to combat blight in our neighborhood, and it would incentivize landlords who are doing their jobs, who are keeping their properties up to code, and it would hold absentee landlords who don't live in our community and don't walk past those homes every day and run into their tenants in the grocery store, it would hold them accountable. Thank you.
Larry?
And along with what Autumn's saying, this program would also help the tenants, because you'll teach tenants can learn. If they're into a house that is being taken care of, they're more apt to have more pride in where they live. They're going to be held more accountable as well through this program. With the inspections, that will protect the landlord. If they rent a place and, at the beginning of the year, and they go in and there's no damage, and they get, they're called back, there's damage, well, that tenant is held responsible. It doesn't always, it doesn't always have to fall on the landlord. And Autumn said, it's not going to be a direct cost other than the registration. It will pay for itself. They do it in Erie, they have lost no renters, they've had no problem with the program for the last 10 years. Also, it would ensure, you know, we have to think about our firefighters. If we know that all these rental properties, because a lot, most of, a lot of our fires involve rental properties. So if our firefighters know that this house is inspected yearly or however, they can go in knowing that they don't have to worry about a wall collapsing on them or the foundation being unsafe. So it's twofold. It protects the tenant, it also protects the landlord, it protects our emergency services. I was out last week and went to a house, talked with a gentleman that just got out of the hospital a week or so prior because he had to have surgery on his lungs because of mold. But he was afraid to say anything for fear of being evicted or the rent going up on him. So that would protect the tenants. And that's, and we, this program is not to harm or hurt anybody, it's to benefit, everyone can benefit from it.
Thank you. John?
Well, we've had this problem for years. I mean, we talked about, way back about 2008, 2009, before I was on council, about having this program. We got a lot of pushback from the landlords. I was in, in my career, I was in two houses in Meadville that I thought looked like fire traps. Why would anybody live here? You know, plaster was down, the wood and glass were exposed, and set up a gun. Both of them burned. You know, both of them burned down. But why did people live there? Because they didn't charge very much. The problem is not housing, the problem is almost universal poverty in the city. You've got too many poor people that will live in substandard conditions because it's cheap, and they can't afford anything else. If you give, make landlords fix their property up, yeah, that's a good thing, but a lot of people won't be able to afford it. So, you know, it's a catch-22 on those issues. Yeah, it's a good idea. I've been in the rental business since I got out of college, you know, and we try to take care of our property, and, you know, when people bring things up, we do. But I see lots of people that don't bother, and lots of absentee landlords. I think the housing thing last month, there was like 20%, 15% of the apartments in Meadville were vacant. Just nobody lives in them. You know, this is the kind of stuff that goes on. Yeah, housing inspection's a good program, it's a good idea, it protects people, but you're going to get pushed back from the owners, and you're probably going to, it's one of those deals where you're going to probably hurt people that you don't want to, you know, you're trying to help. These places will just be off the market that really, really poor people rent.
Thank you. Next question, begin with Autumn. Now, as candidate, what do you offer that your three opponents don't?
I'm going to answer a different question. So my campaign isn't about me. I'm obviously running my campaign with Larry McKnight, and it's because it's about the people of Meadville. It's about new leadership in our city government, it's about bringing new voices to the table. We appreciate the leadership that we've had for a long time, and we just think that it's ready for a new chapter, and we think Meadville is ready to take that next step. We've seen, we've seen people roll up their sleeves and get to work, and we've seen, again, this can-do spirit that Meadville has to try new things, to take risks, and to do some things that are maybe unconventional but are inventive and that addresses, address some of the problems that we face. I think I'm ready to do that, I think Larry's ready to do that, I think Meadville's ready to do that. So I'm like Larry in that sense, and like Meadville in that sense as well.
Larry, the question again is, as a candidate, what do you offer that your three opponents don't?
I can't speak. I'm going to answer like Autumn. We're a team. We're offering safe, affordable housing. We want people to be more involved in our local government, and we want to look at our parks. What we're offering together, and it's concerned, caring, commitment to see Meadville as a whole. We're not, we're doing this as a team. We're trying to show Meadville that you can come together, it doesn't, it doesn't matter who you are, what color you are, where you're from, whether you're male, female. If you love Meadville, you're going to be willing to work together. And that's what Autumn and I are showing. If anything different than our other opponents, we're a little bit younger, sorry, John. We're a little bit younger than them. Other than that, we just love Meadville and we have a desire to see Meadville become a great place.
John?
You know, I'm really excited that young people are finally interested in government. You know, it's not the kind of activism I've seen since Kennedy days. You know, people are now interested, and I really appreciate that. But you've got the same old ideas that we talked about, the kind of socialist ideas that, you know, we're going to make housing cheap, affordable, nice, you know. It's just, you know, I live in reality. I live in the real world where this, you know, housing is essentially market-based, you know. These kind of ideas we talk about years, year after year after year, and, you know, it just, it's just hard to do, you know. And I really, I'm proud of you guys to take this initiative, but I just don't see how you're going to make much of change. We have a lot of experience in different kind of organizations and government agencies and stuff, and we deal with budgets and stuff like that, and you're really inspirational. But I got to tell you, what we got is experience. Thank you.
Nancy?
Well, I think that the experience that I have comes from when I was a young girl and came to Meadville and started, I was a big sister. I started out as a big sister. And I had my little sister from the time she was six years old, she's now 42 years old, and she's still my little sister. I served on that board, I got on the United Way Board, I was on there for 40 years. I have served on many nonprofits, and that's where I got my experience. I didn't even think about running for office until I was older, until I thought I could give back to Meadville, until I, I mean, I think it's wonderful that we have all these different groups and everything that they want. You should be willing to do that no matter what. We need that every day in Meadville. We need that every day in Meadville. Everybody should be willing to give back. Everybody steps forward to do Jimmy Moore. Everybody steps forward to do all the events that we have in Meadville. But when you're sitting down and you're doing a budget, to be able to think that you could bring in groups, I mean, we welcome their ideas. But when I look out in Chamber every single week, and there's nobody there, if you want to give us your ideas, please do. But if you don't show up for a year, then you show up and say, you don't know what we're talking about. Well, I go to town halls. I listen to people. I listen to them in grocery stores. They call me on the phone. They give me their ideas. But we have a limited amount of time. We have budgets. We have things going on all the time. We don't just attend two meetings a month. We're busy all the time. And I feel that the experience that I have, Center for Family Service, for example, the one nonprofit that I sit on, they take care of seven food pantries in this town. They have a rental program that they take care of. They have women who are single that want to get a home or credit, if your credit's bad. They take care of that. That's just what one group does that I sit on. I'm aware of what is available in the city of Meadville, and I tell people all the time what is available. So experience.
Nancy, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off at that point.
Sorry. I get passionate about stuff like that.
I may need one of the grandkids to help me run that. But I'm going to close out on a more of a lighthearted note. We'll start this question with Larry. And we've got Trick or Treat coming up, and usually it is the Thursday before the Halloween Parade, which will be this Saturday. But when Trick or Treat falls on a Hallo-, on Thursday, like it does this year, if you were on council, would you want to put Trick or Treat actually on that Thursday of Halloween?
Oh, definitely. And the reason I answer that is because, as I said, I drive school, and I drive for young, little kids, preschool, kindergarten, and elementary, and as well as junior, some junior, senior high kids. And they all said, yes, they would love it. You know, I think we have to take us adults out of the picture because we're not the only ones. You know, we have kids that are growing up. We say we want to provide things, we want our children to do things, but we're letting something as simple as Trick or Treat, we're taking that away from them. What better way to enjoy Trick or Treat than on Halloween? I mean, come on. And it's about, not just about the young adults, it's about the kids, you know? It's, how could you make a, what kind of bond could you have with your kids when they, oh, I remember mom and dad taking us out dressed up, and it was Trick or Treat, it was Halloween. So, yeah, you know, let's, if we're, say we're looking out for the kids and we want, we want them to have enjoyable moments, let's really do it. There was no reason not to change it. No, you know, there's no difference in safety or whatever. We need to think and do things, start doing things for our kids and stuff because it was different. Nobody wanted to do it.
Thank you. John?
That was a decision that we mulled over for a long time because, actually, council at first talked about having it tend to the month when Halloween happened, but the long tradition has been that it's before the parade, Thursday before the parade. And one of the issues that came up was that the schools coordinated with that because the day before the parade, on Friday before, schools were closed, was the day after Trick or Treat. So I'm not sure, schools never actually said kids were wild and crazy on Friday, but I think that's where it initially came from. But anyway, we went back and forth on it and eventually settled on the arrangements that we had. The school, the schools were closed on Friday before the Halloween Parade and had been for years, the Thursday before the parade. I don't think it happens very often that the parade is, you know, a week or so before the end of the month. So anyway, I think that right decision was made, which, by the way, almost every other community did the same thing.
Thank you. Nancy?
Yeah, it's my understanding that it was requested of the teachers because of the school being closed the next day. We all know that these kids are eating sugar from the minute they get to a house. I mean, they come to my house. And, you know, the weather's not always the greatest, so the later you go in October, the worse it gets. The kids come to my house, they have their little outfits on, and they don't have coats on and everything. So I'm sure they're trying not to spread germs and stuff around, but that was the reason behind it. We often say that it's probably one of the toughest decisions that council makes. If the school decided to shut the school down the next day after October, I wouldn't have had a problem with that. But my understanding is that the teachers requested it because they have the day off the next day.
Autumn?
Sure. So I was at that council meeting, and it was, it was pretty wild. It was, it was a unanimous vote to hold Trick or Treating the week before Halloween. And then I think after the vote was cast and it was closed, one of the council members said something like, one of these years, we're going to, we're going to Trick or Treat on Halloween. And it kind of blew my mind, like, are we just, are we just doing things the way that we always do them because we're afraid to try anything different? And, I mean, Halloween, there are, you know, it's not a super consequential decision, right? There's not a lot at stake. If we want to try something else one year, we'll get a chance to do it again next year. And there's also not a lot at stake to put it out to people. We know when Halloween is coming up every year. It's not a surprise. You can look ahead in the calendar. I'm not a kid, and I don't have kids, so maybe the decision should be put out there and give, give people who are kids or have kids a chance to weigh in on when they'd like to go Trick or Treating. It doesn't come as a surprise, and it would be, you know, a pretty low-stakes way to engage people, maybe for the first time, on something that's fun and that people care about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, that is going to conclude our questioning for this evening. We're going to give each candidate up to two minutes to make a closing statement, and then I'll have the last word after we go through that. We'll go in reverse order, so Autumn, we'll start with you, and you have up to two minutes.
Sure. So I'll reiterate the thanks that we extended earlier to the Tribune, to Active Aging, to Armstrong Cool, to all of our volunteers, and to all of you who are here watching and listening. There's really great work happening in these last few years in Meadville, and I've been fortunate enough to have a front row seat to see a lot of it unfold. I've also been fortunate enough to work on Mymeadville and to help create a shared vision for our town. And what have I learned through this process? I've learned that the people of Meadville are smart, creative, passionate, and ready and willing to get to work for this town. We had 130 people come out to this location to craft value statements that expressed what we share in common as core values to living in Meadville. We had 150 people come up with ideas for action to bring those values into being, and we had over 300 people show up at the Diamond to see those actions unveiled. So when we say we can't get people out to public events, I think that we've demonstrated that in other ways of doing business, we can. People are ready, people are willing, and people are excited. Mymeadville and the process of listening to the community cannot be relegated to a two-year project. Instead, we need a city government that's ready to embrace those lessons of listening to residents and involving them meaningfully in decision-making. We need a city council prepared to make this the new business as usual. Larry and I are committed to that. We've gone door-to-door twice a week for six months alongside a lot of dedicated volunteers. We've been working hard on this election, and we're ready to work hard for Meadville. We ask for both of your votes on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
It's been an honor to serve you as city councilwoman for two years, and I would ask for the opportunity to serve you yet again. Meadville is my home, not a stopover. I've lived here for all my life, and I, if God willing, I'd like to live here another three years. City council is the means to serve my community. It's not a springboard to a higher political office. The eight years that I've served, it's never to run for another office. Meadville is a community. It's not a laboratory for social experimentation. At the end of the day, one thing is clear. There's no such thing as a free lunch. Every promise, every program, every initiative has a cost, and somebody has to pay that price. Margaret Thatcher once observed that the problem with socialism is that you eventually run out of other people's money, and then your own money is at stake. You've worked hard to pay your bills, build your credit, for many of you to pay for your homes. My goal is to enable you to keep your homes for as long as you choose, not to be forced to sell because of unchecked government spending. I offer you proven performance, not promises, and I appreciate your support on November 5th. Thank you.
John? You have up to two minutes.
On this one?
Yes.
Okay. It's been my honor and my privilege to serve on council for the last nine years, I guess it isn't, to have the opportunity to use my experience to help the people of Meadville. We have a lot of ideas floated around here today, but I'm inclined to agree with Nancy. Eventually, you're going to run out of other people's money. So, but I think that we have some good experience on council, and I think that we've done awfully good job the last several years of running this city, and I would appreciate your vote on November 5th to maintain me and, as a council member, and to represent you. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. I just, I'm just going to be straight on us. I can't believe people feel that you're going to go broke by doing what is right. What is wrong with having safe, affordable housing? What is wrong with people that want parks? What is wrong with having people, the citizens that pay your, that pay taxes, being involved in local government? There's nothing wrong with that. You're not going, you're not going to go broke. Programs that you're saying that can't be initiated, when I was a kid, we had these programs. But as you said, lack of interest, and those cycles change. Things are, fads come in, they go, they go. But now we have more of a younger crowd, more younger parents with kids. We need parks. We need programs for our young kids. We need to look at new avenues. There's money out there that we can go and get. I'm just, I'm just really upset at the fact that we're looking at what we used to do and saying what we can't do. We're not about that. We're saying this is what we can do with support and input from everybody. It's time for a change. We need to quit saying, no, we can't do this, or we didn't do it last year, so we're not going to do it this year, or it's always been this way. Look where we're at. We need to try something different. That's the bottom line. And I grew up, I was born and raised here. I love this town. I'm passionate, just as passionate as the rest of you about this town. But I know what has been going on here. I know what can go on again. We had park programs. We had different programs. We had the Unity Center. We had college students that, and still are willing to come and work in our town with our kids. City council has to reach out and say, hey, let's work together. It can be done.
Thank you. We want to thank the candidates, Autumn Vogel, Nancy Mangelo-Bitner, John Bataglia, and Larry McKnight for appearing here tonight and for their willingness to answer the questions. We thank everybody here for joining us and sharing their passions. On behalf of Rick Green and the Meadville Tribune, I'm Keith Gushard. I do want to remind you, though, that tonight's forum, if you missed it or you want to watch it again, it's going to be on Armstrong Cable's Channel 23 and Channel 100 at 7:30 on Wednesday night and also at 5:00 PM on Friday.